Hi, to all to work, this is Reguere Media of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees Monday, October 7th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with a ready and just law.
Approval of meeting agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda as written.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, seconded by treasurer Hahnold, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes. Approval of minutes.
I motion to approve the minutes of the September 3rd, 2024 Board of Trustees' meeting as presented.
Second.
Ooh, wow, that was great. Okay, so I have a motion by treasurer Hahnold, seconded by trustee Clifford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, the motion passes. Public announcements? Public comment? All right, moving on to consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board. It will be enacted by one motion. According to established Township Meeting Rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Board or public still requests it after prior to the meeting, in which event the Chair of the meeting may amend such. I am thus writing consent agenda for discussion and consideration under item number eight below. Approval of consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call vote, thus present and voting.
For orders and bills, we have $611,027.87 to be approved.
I will motion to approve the consent agenda and the orders and bills in the amount of $611,027.87.
I have motion by treasurer Hahnold, seconded by trustee Clifford, made a deputy clerk, please call, roll.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, moving on to new business, item A, fire engine purchase proposal. Chief White?
Chief Two-Fire Department of the Board, tonight I come before you with a request I have mentioned on a couple of different occasions, that the Fire Department was in the process of specing out a new fire engine to replace a truck that's now over 20 years old and is coming to the end of what NFPA would consider its useful life. The, like, this has been about an 18-month process, where we've gone through various specifications on trucks, actually gone out and seen some vehicles, both here and out of state, to get a good look at what we would like to serve our community now, and really when you're buying this for the next 20-plus years. So you want to make sure you get this right. The truck we're proposing is built by Pierce Manufacturing. The total amount of the truck as of today is $1,218,146. These trucks have gone up considerably, just even the time that we've been working to develop this bit. Pre-COVID, a truck like this probably would have cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $800,000. So that's the kind of cost increases we've seen. The truck will take about 40 months to build from the time we sign the purchase agreement, if the Board provides the authorization to do that tonight. And what we have to do is put down a $200,000 down payment on the vehicle, the rest will be due upon the vehicle's delivery. We have discussed this at various budget times, we've looked at our fund balance, which really has plenty of money to pay cash upfront, but there was not enough credit for a cash upfront payment to make up for what we would lose on the money that we invest in our own account. So if they wouldn't give us a higher percentage for cash upfront than what we're able to make in our CDs and other savings, we could have looked at that as an option and just paid it all, or proposed to pay it all tonight. But instead, we chose to pay the $200,000 and the rest on deposit. There is a provision in here, I sent this to the Board, with regards to it, and this would have been no matter whether we did cash tonight, or the way that we're doing it with just a deposit tonight, and that is because these manufacturers, really all the manufacturers were the same, because these manufacturers can't know what may happen to manufacturing costs over four years, there is a provision in the purchase agreement that allows them to make an increase based on the Federal Producer Price Index over the next four years. So the final price could come in at an amount more than this $1,218,000 when the truck is completely built. Again, all the specialty truck manufacturers are doing that, we find it's common across the industry, whether by ambulances, rescues, or fire engines. So that provision is in there. We went, we used a firm called Sourcewell. Sourcewell is used throughout the nation, they do bids for very large communities, places like New York, you know, Chicago, Detroit, Los Angeles, and so they really do get the price for the best bid for the vehicle. But not wanting to just take that, we also tried on our own to go out to four other vendors, just independently. We got responses from each of them, and I included that in your package, that they decided not to bid because they recognized they couldn't beat the Sourcewell owners. And Sourcewell is basically just like a purchasing consortium for municipalities. So with that, we've provided a blueprint of the truck, just so the Board had that information. It's worthy to mention to the audience, the people watching, that this purchase will not cost any increase in our tax, our special assessment for taxes. This is money that we've already put away, we'll continue to put money away into what's called the New Truck Fund over that four-year period, and so there won't be some increase to our citizens over us buying a new fire truck. So I'm really proud of that fact for our department. So with that, we're requesting that the Board approve tonight the Township Supervisor signing the purchase agreement with Pierce Manufacturing for the new fire truck in the amount of $1,218,146, with a $200,000 down payment.
I make a motion we proceed with the purchase of the new fire truck as described by Public Safety Director White with a $250,000 down payment.
It'll only be 200,000. I know originally we thought it was going to be 250, so my email said 250, and then it turned out to be 200 when we worked with them.
Okay, with a $200,000 down payment.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, seconded by treasurer Hahnold, made a deputy clerk, please call, roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Thank you all. Mr. Supervisor, but may I just like to mention, I think it's good for the public to know these things, for about the last 10 days, the EMS, the Richmond Lennox EMS, which is co-owned by Lennox and Richmond Township, has had a crew serving FEMA and the whole Department of Homeland Security down in the North Carolina area. They are right, they are serving right in the Asheville area, that you see daily on the news. They've indicated the devastation there is just as bad as you see it. It's not being exaggerated by the news media. The folks are really struggling there, as you see, but I'm really pleased with our staff, who I spoke with last night by phone for the first times, because there hasn't been a cell signal there. They seem to be doing well, they're tired, but they seem to be doing well. I think we should all be proud of them as a community for their service of being down there. Right now, we're scheduled to come home on Saturday this week, that'll be about a two-week deployment, that could in fact change based on what happens with the incoming storm, because the crews that might have been going down to relieve them in North Carolina may be diverted to Florida, as if the need should arise. So I'll keep the Board informed every year.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. White, I have a question. Excuse me, I was invited, but I was unable to attend. How did the K-9 training go for the Fire Department?
Oh, so the K-9s, two items that I'll mention real quickly. The K-9 graduation went well, the training was all completed, and we had a little graduation ceremony for the dogs up at the Richmond Fire Department last week. Thanks to, you know, Clint Morgan, one of our residents here, who spent years and years as a K-9 officer for the McComb County Sheriff's Department, donated his time to all the training. We have Tractor Supply, who still today is donating all the food for the K-9s, for both the Richmond Lennox Township and the local veterinary, Richmond Veterinary, that's doing all the veterinary work for the dogs. So it really has been a community effort to bring these dogs to bear, and they're ready to go.
Allow the Seaford Building to be used?
Yeah, we use a number of sites around the Township, around both Townships, actually, in both Lennox and the Richmond area for doing the actual training with the dogs. And the one other thing I'll mention is yesterday was Fire Department Open House Day. We had a good turnout, and everything went very, very well. It's always a pleasure to just go out and visit with the public and let them come in and see what we do at both the Fire Department and EMS on that Sunday over here. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, item B, DPW Assistant Physician Replacement Proposal, Madam Clerk.
So on behalf of Cam Trably, the DPW Superintendent, last week, Cam was informed by Joe Vanard that he had accepted another full-time position and was submitting his two-week notice. Joe's last day will be October 10th. Joe has done a great job for Lennox Township and the DPW. He wishes him the very best in his future endeavors. With that being said, he is requesting Anthony Rubino, our seasonal employee, to be moved to full-time, to that full-time position. He has spoken with Anthony about the position, and he's very interested.
I make a motion we move Anthony Rubio, our seasonal employee, to the full-time position that will be vacated.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, seconded by trustee Gurley, made a deputy clerk, please call, roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
All right, item C, Set Public Hearing Date for T.J. Enterprises LLC, Mr. Graybaum?
Good evening, Board. This evening, we are coming forward requesting that the Board set a public hearing date for the next board meeting, which will be November 12th, I believe? It's November 12th, November 12th for the public hearing. This sets a motion, requirements on the renewals that are coming up, that are also going to be processed through the Planning Commission prior to that, but we are required to have a public hearing, so we do want to set that so that it is advertised and notified in advance. That I'll request that the Board consider the November 12th public hearing for T.J. Enterprises.
It's mandatory that we have this public hearing?
Yeah, if we don't set a public hearing, don't hold one, it automatically renews under the Specialty Use Agreement.
Are you looking at around 6 o'clock?
We can set the timeframe whatever you'd like to.
Don't we usually have a public hearing before the regular meeting?
I think we do it usually during the meeting. During the meeting.
Okay, a motion to set a public hearing for November 12th, 2024, for T.J. Enterprises LLC, at 6:30.
I have a motion by treasurer Hahnold, seconded by clerk Lawson, made a deputy clerk, please call, roll.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item D, Audit and Election Advisor Proposal, Mr. Graybaum?
Good evening, Board. This evening, the Supervisor's Office is bringing forward a request. Normally, a presidential election and our annual audit, both of which are going to be proceeding through the month of October and into November, place an abnormal amount of extra work and pressure, not only on our staff, but everyone involved. This year, it is expected that the demands of the Township employees will be greater than ever, given the highly contested national election. The expected high turnout and the scrutiny that the election process now receives from the public and the press. The Supervisor's Office is proposing the hiring of Ms. Luanne Candell as a general election and audit advisor at the rate of 25 an hour to aid and advise Township employees as to when requested during the 2024 presidential election and assist in the annual audit. Ms. Candell's position is intended to be, intended and expected to be cooperative and no way to interfere with the clerk's ability and/or authority to perform statutory duties as required. It is furthermore proposed that Ms. Candell's, Ms. Candell is to report to the Board of Trustees as a whole and shall serve in her capacity until the election of the annual audit and the certification of the November election results by the Board of the Campus as are completed. Then I'll open it up for any questions.
So do you know, so I guess, because this wasn't discussed with the clerk's office prior, do we know kind of what tasks she's going to be doing? Like, do we know, like, what we're planning on having her do?
My understanding was with the election requirements, whatever the clerk's office assistance is going to be needed to assist in those items, with the volume that's coming in at this point, it looks like the expectations would be to actually assist and support the clerk's office. At that direction.
And then the audit as well?
That would be to support that audit also as...
Like pulling invoices when they need them?
That would be the first impact, because the audit will be, the audit was supposed to start today.
Yeah.
They have installed that audit.
Yeah.
So it looks like they will do a deep-dive forensic audit on this, so it's just advisable to have that additional support for your office, for the Treasury Office, for the Township. The past experience is, I believe, the reason the recommendation was made.
And is this going to be a temporary position, based on...
This, as it's stated, there's no way to interfere in the abilities or duties, shall serve in the capacity until the completion of the annual audit and the certification of the November election results. So by the end of November, at the latest...
So like, November 7th is usually when they certify?
Well, that, and then you also have to complete the audit.
Yeah.
So you've got a couple, three weeks here that the timeframe is involved, so I've seen some of the audits actually extend all through November 20th. Just saying, I've seen, in my past, I've seen it actually extend all the way into, if there was issues or forensics deep dive, they've actually made it into December. So just a clarification, I don't want to make a promise, just a clarification, I have seen some forensic audits go much deeper. Expectation, don't believe so.
Yep, okay. Do you feel like $25 an hour is reasonable? I mean, most of our employees don't make that now, so that's higher than probably half.
I would say, given the wealth of knowledge and the experience this individual possesses, $25 an hour is very much well worth the expense. You also have to consider that this is a contracted position, that it offers nothing else whatsoever.
I understand, but we could also have election inspectors come in and work for like $16 an hour or so. It just seems high, considering...
But they couldn't do help with the audit?
Well, no, but I've already submitted everything that I can for the audit, and Carol Cunningham is literally the internal auditor, so it's like pulling invoices.
But when they're here, they ask for someone to...
Right, they ask for invoices, they ask for things being pulled out of their files and stuff.
Right.
They're submitting, she's not going to be submitting any reports, I've already done all that, so that just seems high, in my opinion, but this wasn't discussed with me prior, so I'm just stating when I feel that.
Not a problem, I'm more than happy to answer the questions that I can.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Ms. Luanne Candell as the general election and audit advisor until the completion of the 2024 annual audit and the certification of the November election results by the McComb County Board of Campusers at a rate of $25 per hour.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by treasurer Hahnold, made a deputy clerk, please call, roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item E, Clerk of Assistant Proposal, Madam Clerk?
Jenna Raymond has consistently proven to be an invaluable employee of the clerk's office, so that over the past few months, her contributions have made a significant impact on the workflow of the clerk's office. Jenna has been learning and managing tasks such as reconciling the bank accounts, processing payroll from beginning to end, helping with accounts payable, and participating largely in the election-related processes. Her strong work ethic and willingness to take on any task Carol and I ask of her demonstrates her dedication and ability to learn and grow in the clerk's office. She has been a great addition to our team, and I'm recommending she be moved to a permanent employee of the Township. The position was originally posted as temp due to my appointment as clerk, with the intention of resuming my position, or my previous role after the term ends. However, I've decided to run as clerk, regardless of the outcome of the selection, Jenna will continue to be an asset to the Township.
I would like to table this until the November election, or I'm sorry, until the November meeting.
I'll support that. There is a motion by treasurer Hahnold to table until the November meeting, supported by the Chair. May the deputy clerk, please call, roll.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item F, Christmas Tree Lighting Propose, Mr. Graybaum?
I do apologize, I know I'm moving a little slow today. All right, this evening, the Supervisor's Office via the Park and Rec Committee is requesting to bring forward a motion to the Christmas Tree Lighting Request. As the annual Christmas Tree Lighting is approaching, on November 16th, the Parks and Recreation Committee has reviewed, will be reviewing...
No, has reviewed.
Had reviewed, as of October 16th. Wait, wait a minute. Sorry, I'm misreading my own notes here. The, chicken scratch, as the annual Christmas Tree Lighting is approaching, we're requesting the quotes to be approved for Let It Glow at the price of $1,200 for lighting the Christmas tree. As you seen last year, this was a fantastic little get-together, the first annual that came out. The turnout for the residents was phenomenal. This year, we plan on actually having our concession stand open and serving as we did last year with additional items. Then I'll bring it back to the Board for any questions or comments. And barring, let me clarify this, barring the weather conditions, we will also be able to utilize a community center for those options.
Hearing no discussion.
Let me tell you, was there a discussion about Let It Glow last year that they weren't happy with it? Didn't we have, wasn't there some voices that came out from the public that said they weren't, it wasn't, let's say, full of pizzazz, so to speak? I mean, I just, I remember some of the public out there talking, I guess I'm the only one who heard it, but...
I'd probably say the pizzazz was probably the lack of coordination with the event. This is, we have a vacancy in the Recreation Department now, so there will be a different coordination of the event. Let It Glow came in as the lowest bidder, the Parks and Rec Committee reviewed the quotes, and this came in significantly lower.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to approve Let It Glow for the Christmas Tree Lighting at the cost of $1,200, as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by clerk Lawson, made a deputy clerk, please call, roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Hahnold?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right, item G, Christmas Tree Lighting and Drone Show Event Proposal, Mr. Graybaum?
All right. Mr. Clifford, this might actually answer your questions. As of the annual Christmas Tree Lighting that is approaching, that is scheduled for November 16th, the Park and Rec Committee has recommended a new part of the Christmas Tree Lighting, something that has been seen by many members of this organization. We believe that this is going to bring the ultimate pizzazz, as you made that statement or comment. Part of this tree lighting is actually going to be a drone show. The Lennox Township Park and Rec Committee, at their last meeting, unanimously approved Firefly Drone Shows to perform a 300 drone show at the tree lighting. Now, the cost is, in fact, $15,000. The item has been budgeted, although in Parks and Rec Committee expenses through the program. Please note that the Firefly Drone Show has given Lennox Township a 75% discount from their usual pricing. And for either members of the audience here tonight, or members that watch, if you have not seen one of these things in person, this type of show put on, we have the complex capable, the concern becomes the parking when we look at this, because when people find out about this, this show is absolutely phenomenal. And I think some of us actually got to see a drone show last year, and then again this past year, 4th of July, locally. This is absolutely phenomenal.
$15,000 is 75% off.
That's 75% off.
Well, I did do a get.
I'm bringing forward what they gave you, yeah. I know, I do understand that. They are not cheap, that is for sure. But with that, I'll bring it back to the Board, which is solely up to you guys.
Hearing no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve Firefly Drone Shows to be a new part of Lennox Township annual tree lighting event at the cost of $15,000 for a 300 drone show as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Committee.
for a three-hundred drone show as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Second.
I have a motion by the Chair, seconded by Treasurer Hahn. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, moving on, public comment. Seeing none, call from the Board?
Um, I actually should have probably mentioned this during the public announcement. We are doing our annual New Haven, Village of New Haven and Lennox Township Community Dinner on November 22nd at the New Haven High School from six to eight. It's a great event. It doesn't cost anybody anything, just a donation to the food pantry. So it replenishes that food pantry for probably most of the winter months. We have raffles, which all that profit goes back to the food pantry. Also, we do a full Thanksgiving dinner along with ham and meatballs, and almost all of it is fully donated. We've served probably three to four hundred people every November. So it's a fantastic event to come out to, and we get a lot of high school kids that get community hours to help. So if you're not busy, come on out and have a nice dinner.
I'd like to support what she's saying. I volunteer at times, sit down with the pantry, and we are, the increased amount that's coming through is substantial. We could use all we can get.
Call from the Board, going once, going twice. All right, moving on to adjournment.
I will motion to adjourn at seven oh one.
Second.
I have motion by Treasurer Hall, supported by Trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposing hearing none, we are adjourned.